At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of the public comment shall be limited to sixty minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, and no participant may address or question the board members individually. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals, no vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals, and comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, I would call the first speaker who signed up, and the only speaker who signed up, Marie Mott.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Ms. Mott.
Good evening, Board President Martero, Madam Vice President Castillo, Board Commissioners, Superintendent Pupulmire, and the staff. I wanted to just come tonight to thank the board for taking the time to recognize our marching band. They work so hard, you know, over the past few years, and as you can see, it pays off with the results of them winning the national and the state championship for three years in a row. I just want you to realize that as a result of that, all of the hard work that you guys put in, all of the board members do, and all the time that you put in to make this such a successful district, the parents are very proud of their children. They're proud of the district, they're proud of what they've accomplished. And the staff also works very, very hard. And I noticed that Mr. Short and Mr. Dillon, they are exceptional. They really are phenomenal, and they work very hard in the many hours that they put in at night. And it's a great honor to be here tonight to show off, you know, what they've been able to accomplish this year. I would like to especially say thank you to Commissioner Pereira for actually sending out letters to all the students. That was really, really exceptional, and it was very touching. Thank you, Commissioner. Also, I wanted to thank personally, I know he's not here tonight, but Commissioner Trillo, also Commissioner Gonzalez, who's not here tonight, and a few other commissioners, which Commissioner Nasso and Commissioner Padilla, for all they do and their concerns regarding the, you know, the marching band. And I also definitely would like to say thank you to the board president, Mr. Martero, and the vice president Castillo for all the support, also because we've heard the concerns and addressed them. And we want to say thank you, kind of representing parents here. So I want to say thank you so much for taking the time out and investing, you know, in our kids. And also, just to retire the word, you know, thank you for actually continuing the progress and keep up the good work. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mott. Seeing that there are no other speakers who signed up. At this time, I close the public portion of the meeting. I want to ask that Mr. Kennedy please take us through the agenda.
Thank you. Who are the minutes of the meetings of October seventeen and twenty-four?
I'm sorry, also, Mr. Kennedy also want to recognize to the record our board vice president, Elsie Castillo Estina. Thank you.
Approve all the minutes?
Move the report? Moved by Commissioner Pereira, seconded by Commissioner Palo. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Bathles?
Yes. I just would like to make a comment in regards to the delivery of our binders. Normally, our binders come about six to seven days prior to our meeting. This time, it was, I received it at my home one or two days ago. So due to that, I will not be able to vote accordingly on some of the matters in the binder because I didn't have any time to fully read it and comprehend what is going on for me to make an informed decision. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Señor Ropel? Bathles?
Upstain.
Calela? Here. Yas? Castillo?
Yes.
Nazca?
Yes.
Padilla? Pereira?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Acceptance of the Secretary and Treasurer's report for the month of September? Approve the report? Moved by Commissioner Pereira, seconded by Commissioner Palo. Any questions or comments? Señor Ropel? Bathles?
Again, due to the lack of time, I will abstain.
Calela? Yes. Castillo?
Yes.
Nazca?
Yes.
Padilla? Pereira? Yes. Montero? Yes. Two A Personnel Report? Move the report? Second? Moved by Mr. Palo, seconded by Commissioner Pereira. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
And the status?
On page fourteen, is that a new position, Director of Process Improvement?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
On page fourteen?
Page fourteen?
Yes. Is a position entitled Director of Process Improvement, is that a new position? I don't know the director of HR enough to answer that.
Ms. Bathles, that position, Director of Process Improvement, was incorporated into the Table of Organization during the 2012 school year. We have been interviewing since the spring of 2012 for this position.
And can you tell me what it entails?
I'm sorry?
Can you tell me what the position entails?
Certainly. I have a copy of the job description for you that I can provide. In essence, it's a position that entails conducting the analysis of all the systems of the organization and being able to make the appropriate recommendations with regard to necessary improvements. I have a detailed analysis with regard to what it entails that I can provide for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Señor Ropel? Bathles?
Again, I will abstain.
Calela? Yes. Castillo?
Yes.
Nazca?
Yes.
Padilla? Yes. Pereira? Yes, with extensions on thirty-eight, fifty-two, forty-one, fifty-two, and thirty-five. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, I'd like to amend my order to an extension on page fifteen and fifty-four, please.
Thank you. Tab two B Personnel Report? Move the report?
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Pereira, seconded by Commissioner Estina. Any questions or comments? Señor Ropel? Bathles?
Upstain.
Calela? Yes. Castillo?
Yes.
Nazca?
Yes.
Padilla? Yes. Pereira? Yes. Montero?
Yes.
Pad three Tuition Report?
Move the report?
Second? Moved by Commissioner Pereira, seconded by Commissioner Calela. Any questions or comments? Señor Ropel? Bathles?
Yes.
Calela? Yes. Castillo?
Yes.
Nazca?
Yes.
Padilla? Yes. Pereira? Yes. Montero?
Yes.
Four A Considerations? Move the report?
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Pereira, seconded by Commissioner Estina. Any questions or comments? Señor Ropel? Bathles?
Yes.
Calela? Yes. Castillo?
Yes.
Nazca?
Yes.
Padilla? Yes. Pereira? Yes. Montero? Yes. Four B Use of Facilities?
Like to move the report waiver of all fees, items one through six.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Nazca, seconded by Commissioner Estina. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Ms. Bathles?
For number five, once again, I had brought this to the attention of the board last month in regards to any council member requesting any of use of our facilities for them to do it on a month-to-month basis. That was something that we had discussed, and we had approved at the September, I believe, the August or the September meeting. And once again, someone is requesting to use our facilities in January through March, as well as April, as well as May, and we're approving it. If I just ask that the board just stay consistent that we're going to do it on a month-to-month basis, then we do that, and if we're going to do it for a whole year, then we do the same thing.
I think the ruling was for the, when council members use it for their council actions, that's a civic organization that just happens to have the name of a council.
So we're saying that if they're doing a community event, then they can request a facility month in advance, and if it's a community, like a, what is it? Block watch community, then it's to be on a month-to-month basis?
Uh, yes, yes.
I just want to make sure that we're clear, because I'm going to bring it to attention every month. So if we're clear, then I can just leave it alone.
That's the way I understand it, yes.
Is that correct, Mr. President?
Yeah, Ms. Bathles, I think it's a pleasure of the board. As you know, as boards go, it's more of a courtesy that the board even allows community or facilities to be used and at the way where it's, again, it's at the pleasure of the board. And again, as you know, Ms. Bathles, we've discussed this at length, and as you know, because you're the big builder of bridges here, the city of Elizabeth, we've asked them several times, and Mr. Kennedy can correct me if I'm wrong, if the city allows to use the town hall for a town meeting, and every time we request it, we get a response back that the facilities are not available. So I think we extend, we go above and beyond extending the courtesy here at the Department of Education to not only city council people, but as well as community organizations, children organizations. And we have done that, continue to do that. And the parameters, we said, I think, again, are the pleasure of the board, yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify a question. Thank you.
Snowdick. Any other questions or comments? Señor Ropel? Bathles?
Yes.
Calela? Yes. Castillo?
Yes.
Nazca?
Yes.
Padilla? Yes. Pereira? Yes. Montero? Yes. Four BB Use of Facilities with Usage Fees. Move the report as recommended. Second? Moved by Mr. Pereira, seconded by Commissioner Palo. Any questions or comments? Señor Ropel? Bathles?
Yes.
Calela? Yes. Castillo?
Yes.
Nazca?
Yes.
Padilla? Yes. Pereira? Yes. Montero?
Yes.
Four C Request for Field Trips? Move the report? Second? Moved by Mr. Pereira, seconded by Mr. Palo. Any questions or comments? Señor Ropel? Bathles?
Yes.
Calela? Yes. Castillo?
Yes.
Nazca?
Yes.
Padilla? Yes. Pereira? Yes. Montero?
Yes.
Four CC Supplemental Report of Field Trips? Move the report?
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Pereira, seconded by Commissioner Estina. Any questions or comments? Señor Ropel? Bathles?
Yes.
Calela? Yes. Castillo?
Yes.
Nazca?
Yes.
Padilla? Yes. Pereira? Yes. Montero?
Yes.
Superintendent's Report?
Good evening. It is my pleasure to present the 2012-2014 Assessment of Teaching and Learning. This evening, I would like to call upon our instructional directors, who will be joining me in making a presentation of our pre-K-12 data. Please, if you will join, I'd love to be able to introduce you. I'd like to introduce Tracy Crosby, our Director of Early Childhood and Education, Dr. Dorothy McMillan, our Director of Staff Services, and Rachel Goldberg, our Director of Staff Development. Our vision: The Elizabeth Public Schools will be one of the best school systems in America. We continue to set our benchmarks high. We have been able to attain the status of being one of the best urban school districts in the state of New Jersey, and we continue to strive to be considered one of the nation's best. Our mission is for the Elizabeth Public Schools to continue to provide excellent educational experiences and services to inspire every student to think, to learn, to achieve, and to care. I'd like to share with you a quote from Eleanor Roosevelt: "The future belongs to those who believe in the beauty of their dreams." And that is what we believe in here at Elizabeth Public Schools. This evening, we will share with you the data for our school system. This presentation is reflective of the efforts of all of our teachers and our children. Each and every day, the efforts that they make is reflected in the data that we are going to present to you this evening. This data measures what students know and can do in key subject areas at preschool, elementary, middle, and high school levels. Our district has set clear and measurable expectations for all of our students in all grades. Our expectations are based on the belief that our quality education is a key factor in providing all children with opportunities for their future. It's not enough to simply complete school or receive credentials. Students need critical knowledge and skills, and that is what we are focused on. We're focused on ensuring that we're consistently improving the educational system. This evening, our presentation will address a shift in the standards, moving from New Jersey Core Kirkland Content Standards to the Quality Implementation of the Common Core State Standards, which is a necessary condition for providing all of our students with opportunities to be successful after high school. I would like to introduce Tracy Crosby. We will walk us through our pre-K through grade two data. Good evening, board members, parents, and community members. This evening, I will present to you our early childhood data, which reflects the quality of our preschool classrooms, both in district as well as at our contracted community provider sites. In addition, I will also present our kindergarten through grade two Terranova data. We begin in preschool with the Early Childhood Environmental Rating Scale, or ECHRS-R, which measures the preschool classroom environment, including program structures, routines, and adult-child interactions. The ECHRS-R measures the classroom quality on a seven-point scale, with one being low quality and seven being high quality. During the 2012-2013 school year, our preschool classrooms district-wide averaged a 6.17, which is 24% increase from 2005 and reflective of a high-quality preschool program. The next preschool classroom assessment is the Supports for Early Literacy Assessment, or SEELA. The SEELA measures the quality of supports for young children's language and literacy development, specifically focusing on print awareness, interest in reading and writing, and oral language development. The SEELA is measured on a five-point scale, with one being low quality and five being high quality. During the 2012-2013 school year, the district-wide average for SEELA was a 4.32, which was a 25% increase from 2005 and reflective of a high-quality preschool program that supports language and literacy development. The Preschool Classroom Mathematics Inventory, or PCMI, measures the quality of mathematic instruction in the preschool classroom, focusing more specifically on classroom practices involving numeracy, geometry, measurement, problem-solving, and other mathematical concepts. The PCMI is measured on a five-point scale, with one being low quality and five being high quality. During the 2012-2013 school year, the district-wide average for PCMI was a 4.67, which is a 69% increase from 2005 and reflective of a high-quality preschool program that supports mathematic instruction. Beginning in kindergarten through second grade, students are administered Terranova assessment, which measures the proficiency of skills in the areas of reading, language arts, and mathematics. A comparison of results from the 2012 to the 2013 kindergarten Terranova reflects that our scores have remained relatively flat, with 75% of students in the 41th percentile or above for reading, and 86% of students in the 41th percentile were above for mathematics. The 41th percentile reflects proficiency on a Terranova. First grade Terranova. A comparison of results from 2012 to 2013 first grade Terranova again reflects that our scores have remained relatively flat, with 72% of students in the 41th percentile or above for reading and 82% of students in the 41th percentile were above for mathematics. Second grade Terranova. A comparison of results from the 2012 to the 2013 second grade Terranova reflects that our students have made gains in both reading and mathematics, with 75% of students in the 41th percentile for reading and 84% of students in the 41th percentile for mathematics. At this time, I would like to introduce Rachel Goldberg, Director of Staff Development, who will present data for grades three through eight.
Thank you, Ms. Crosby. As Superintendent Pupulmire introduced, this year marks the first year that the tests have been comprised primarily of Common Core State Standards, a marked difference in our requirements. Just this week, and last week, I should say, the New Jersey Department of Education has announced the strong performance results in the first administration of NJAS assessments that have largely aligned to Common Core. Commissioner Chris Surf commented, "Today's results demonstrate that when you set a high bar, New Jersey teachers and students will need it. The Common Core State Standards focus on critical thinking skills and challenge students to reason and apply their knowledge to the real world. I'm encouraged by these results, especially as we've seen other states struggle with more abrupt changes in their assessments." So what are the Common Core State Standards? The Common Core State Standards define the knowledge and skills students should have within their K-12 education careers so that they will graduate every high school, every high school student able to succeed in entry-level, credit-bearing academic college courses and workforce training programs. The Common Core State Standards are aligned with college and work expectations, are clear, understandable, and consistent, include rigorous content and application of knowledge through higher-order thinking skills. They build upon strengths and lessons of current state standards. They are informed by other top-performing countries so that all students are prepared to succeed in our global economy and society. They are evidence-based standards that show student learning. Commissioners Surf also commented, "In looking at the state test scores, our careful, deliberate transition over the past three years has led to stability rather than upheaval in student test scores." The state of New Jersey shared the state responses with the following chart. You'll notice in the difference that there are only slight increases and slight decreases in all grade levels. This particular chart represents those changes in ELA across the state. In math, the same differences occurred with slight increases and decreases across the grade levels. So now, we're going to move from the state level results to EPS results. So NJAS... The NJAS grade three... From 2012 to 2013, we saw a slight dip in language arts and math consistent with the state averages. But in the face of all of these changes, we have still seen a 6% increase in language arts between 2009 and 2013. In grade four... In grade four, once again, we saw a slight decrease in language arts and a slight increase in mathematics. But since 2009, we have seen an overall 18% increase in our mathematics achievement. In grade five, we saw a slight drop in language arts and mathematics, once again consistent with performance across the state. And in grade five, over time, it still shows a growth since 2008 despite these changes. Our grade six performance shows an increase in mathematics and a very slight dip in language arts. But since 2008, our performance in grade six has risen dramatically, 50% in language arts and 33% in mathematics. Grade seven saw a significant increase just from one year to the next. And this went against what was happening in the rest of the state. And in fact, our students really performed superbly. And as we see, since 2008, we have increased 14% in language arts and 13% we have increased 14% in language arts and 13% in mathematics. In grade eight, our student language arts remain the same with a slight dip in mathematics. But since 2008, our language arts scores have increased 26%, and our mathematics scores have increased 57%. In science, we saw slight dips, once again consistent with state performance. But since 2005, marked differences, including a 45% increase in grade four science and a 41% increase in grade eight science. So now we'd like to move into the high school performance data. NJAS exams are administered to all ninth and 10th grade students to assess their mathematics and language arts skills and to prepare them for the HESPA. Language arts and mathematics scores have increased significantly over the past six years, up 24% in language arts and up 67% in mathematics. NJAS scores for grade 10 in language arts and mathematics have increased by 22% and 49% respectively. The high school proficiency assessment is required by the state of New Jersey for students to graduate from the high school. We can see that language arts and mathematics scores for 2012-2013 have remained relatively flat. However, language arts and mathematics scores have increased significantly since 2008, up 33% in language arts and up 34% in mathematics. Students have three opportunities to pass the HESPA. Banking represents the number of students who pass after the second and third administration of the HESPA. In this case, you see the increase between each cycle. Language arts and mathematics scores have increased during each of the three administrations of the HESPA. Our high school HESPA scores have increased significantly since 2005 with increases of 30% and 40% in mathematics and language arts respectively. We will now compare our data to similar urban districts in New Jersey. I'd like to welcome Dorothy McMullin, Director of Special Education.
So what is a district factor group? A district factor group were developed by the New Jersey Department of Education to compare student achievement between districts that have similar characteristics. What variables are used to determine the DFJ status? District factor groups are determined based on information gathered during the most recent census, including the education levels of city residents, employment rate, median family income, and rate of poverty. Which DFJ does Elizabeth Public Schools belong to? Elizabeth Public Schools belongs to DFGA, a group made up of major urban areas in New Jersey. There are 39 districts in DFGA. Some of the major urban districts are Newark, Patterson, and Camden. For the NJAS 2013 grade three, the Elizabeth Public Schools outperformed the DFGA in language arts and math by 10 and 8 points respectively. In the grade four NJAS, the Elizabeth Public Schools outperformed DFGA 11 points in language arts and 14 points in mathematics. Again, in grade five NJAS, the Elizabeth Public Schools continued to outperform districts in DFGA in both language arts and mathematics. Grade six NJAS scores continued the trend of outperforming DFGA in mathematics and language arts by 10 points in language arts and 14 points in mathematics. Grade seven NJAS scores have also increased by 13 points in language arts and 15 points in mathematics. The trend continues in grade eight, with language arts outperforming DFGA by 12 points and mathematics by 13 points. Grade four and eight NJAS science scores outperformed DFGA by 7 points in grade four and 9 points in grade eight. 2013 HESPA grade 11 scores have also outperformed DFGA in language arts by 3 points and 7 points in mathematics. By Bill Bradley, "Leadership is unlocking people's potential to become better." "We believe that our rigorous standards are preparing our students to be college or career-ready." Thank you, and that concludes our program.
I would just like to make one final comment. The data that we shared with you tonight continues to reinforce the fact that our district, Elizabeth Public Schools, continues to outperform our district factor group A. In addition, while the challenges of the Common Core are being addressed, we had a remarkable opportunity to be able to see how our teachers have in fact adjusted to the Common Core, how in fact they have grown professionally, been able to instill in our students those rigorous standards that are critical and are reflected in our data. This was a challenging year. It was the first time in which the NJAS had incorporated these performance tests, opportunities for these students to be able to attempt a new assessment. That drastic change in terms of how the test was structured in previous years. And as you can see from the data that Rachel Goldberg shared with you, it shows that we in fact are on par with the State Department, with the results of all the other districts in the state of New Jersey. So, once again, we thank the teachers in all of our classrooms. We thank all the children for their hard work. We thank the administrators because the leadership of our principals, our vice principals, and our instructional directors are really what has helped us to get to where we are today. Thank you very much.
I also just want to take your opportunity to thank Superintendent Hubelmeier and her incredible team. These are the unsung heroes, people who were in the shadows, the devoted staff, Ms. Crosby, Ms. Goldberg, and Ms. McMullin. People are not in the classrooms but work with our great staff here at the Luthard Board of Education. And the reason why we have one of the top districts here in the state of New Jersey are for people like the team that Ms. Hubelmeier has assembled behind her. Just wanted to thank them and recognize them for all their hard work. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to be able to present my report to our Board of Education Inside EPS. This evening, we are highlighting Commissioner Searf for having acknowledged our participation as a pilot district. In a statement made by Commissioner Searf in the Evaluation Pilot Advisory Committee 2013 Final Report released today, Commissioner Searf recognized participating districts and the involvement of individuals like Monica Martinez, Elizabeth's own Harvard Strategic Data Project Fellow, and Director of Staff Development Rachel Goldberg, for their efforts in participating in this advisory committee. Commissioner Searf stated, "New Jersey is leading by example by involving those most impacted, teachers and school leaders in the development of more meaningful evaluations and support structures." Ultimately, we all share the same goal, ensuring that every student in our state has access to a high-quality education and that every educator is given timely and meaningful feedback. Thanks to the hard work of our pilot participants and this advisory group, we know a lot more about the successes and challenges of improving evaluation in classrooms, schools, and districts. The District Spotlight shows how Elizabeth Public Schools ensured calibration and accuracy among its administrators. The state of New Jersey Department of Education, in its effort to promote accountability, needs to ensure it's actively involved in promoting greater accuracy. And this means that schools and district leaders can effectively use data to help promote observer accuracy and calibration and to determine whether the administrators are on track to complete the required number of observations, identify outliers in terms of observers who consistently give higher or lower ratings, assess how close observer ratings are to expert ratings, and provide additional training or support as necessary. The New Jersey District Spotlight Elizabeth Public School reports that through continuous training, administrators received initial training on the framework to ensure that all observers understood what to look for and how to rate evidence, and follow-up training based on observation and student assessment data. Observers watched videos. They collected evidence of what teachers and students said and did. And they paired this evidence with competencies. And they rated the evidence according to the rubric. Observer ratings were compared to expert ratings of the same videos. And if they were aligned, observers were certified. Observers regularly calibrated using videos and discussing evidence and ratings. I would like to now report on Elizabeth Public Schools' annual college fair. Elizabeth Public Schools conducted the annual college fair on November 13. Students district-wide from grades six through 12 were invited and encouraged to participate to learn about various post-secondary opportunities. Elizabeth Public Schools' college fair serves as a means to communicate to students and parents the importance of pursuing post-secondary education. During this fair, students and parents learned about the various college and university options as well as financial aid opportunities and college requirements. Additionally, our six high schools participated in the college fair. Each high school showcased their unique themes and as a result, provided sixth- to eighth graders the opportunity to explore potential options as they think about their high school selection. There was much positive feedback from the college representatives. Many were extremely impressed with the seriousness and the quality of students' questions. The questions ranged from program offerings to course requirements for specific majors to financial aid and scholarships. Other college representatives were overwhelmingly impressed with the large turnout of students. I wish to thank those that helped to plan this successful event. The Office of Anti-Bullying Coordinator has gone high-tech and, as a result, eco-friendly. Since September, all harassment, intimidation, and bullying reports are being completed electronically. The computer program known as Hipster allows district team members to report alleged HIV cases and input investigation information electronically. Principals review and close cases on their desktops. Through the computer, the ABC reexamines forms for completion and ensures that allegations are substantiated. The superintendent accesses the reports, evaluates and approves the actions taken, and presents the cases to the Board of Education. As a result of the implementation of Hipster, team members have dramatically reduced the number of paper reports to one, the single report that is given to the board members. Next steps include creating a confidential quarter through which board members can access these reports. This will make hip reporting process paper-free. The ABC trained all school administrators, guidance counselors, and school social workers in the use of Hipster software. The program encourages timely and thorough reporting and helps manage information required for all state reports. I would like to share with you that for the third year in a row, Elizabeth Public Schools students who are in need of a warm coat will be receiving one thanks to a collaborative effort between the New Jersey State Troopers, Elizabeth Public Schools, the Principal Supervisors Union, as well as our EEA. The Marshal Steve Brown chapter of the National Black State Trooper Coalition of the New Jersey State Police has been running the coat drive in the cities of Norfolk, Irvington, Camden, and Trenton for years. The coalition uses donations from state troopers, community members, local faith groups, and local businesses. Then they purchase new coats at a substantial discount from local Elizabeth businesses, including Kidstown USA and Old Navy and Jersey Gardens Mall. Representatives of the New Jersey State Police will join representatives from Elizabeth Public Schools in distributing the coats at their respective schools. Last month, critical issues in education and discussion on what should be considered a priority in 2014 were discussed in Chicago among institutions with large Hispanic populations such as Elizabeth. Elizabeth Public Schools were a feature of some of the discussions as our district strategic plan and student achievement data were presented to the advisory council for review. The Hispanic Association for Colleges and Universities represents more than 400 colleges and universities committed to Hispanic higher education success in the United States, Puerto Rico, Latin America, and Spain. HACU is the only national education association that represents Hispanic-serving institutions. HACU plays an important role in helping to promote equity and excellence for all students. It has led the effort to convince Congress to formally recognize campuses with high Hispanic enrollment as federally designated Hispanic-serving institutions and to begin targeting federal appropriation to these campuses. Everyone has a stake in HACU's crucial goals to promote the development of member colleges and universities to improve access to and the quality of post-secondary educational opportunities for Hispanic students and to meet the needs of business, industry, government through the development and sharing of resources, information, and expertise. And lastly, I would like to share with you the most recent work that our district has engaged in. The most recent Panasonic conference included a presentation by Elizabeth to attendees as well as educational specialists from the Panasonic Foundation to roll out its framework for the next level of work addressing equity within Elizabeth Public Schools. In effort to get feedback from teachers, the district is going to introduce a webpage the week of November 25, which solicits comments and feedback on what is the true definition of equity, expectations, and excellence. That valuable information will be used to inform our thinking on a plan to be announced at the December 12 board meeting. How important is this partnership? The Panasonic Foundation partners with public school districts and their communities to break the links between race, poverty, and educational outcome by improving the academic and social success of all students. All means all. The long-term services include substantial system analysis, leadership coaching, and development, strategic consulting on a wide range of district reform areas, including instructional quality. Since 1987, the Panasonic Foundation has worked in long-term partnerships with large urban school districts in the United States to help them become what would be, in essence, new systems of equity and quality in which all students are educated to high levels in every school, in every classroom, regardless of the background. This year's conference at the Panasonic Leadership Associates Program included Education's Best Kept Secret: Medieval Family Engagement, Byron Garrett, Chairman of the National Family Engagement Alliance. In addition, the Common Core as lever four in excellence was also presented by Charlotte Beckenbauer Public Schools. This district in North Carolina serves 143,000 students, and its district, whose theory of action began with managed instruction, has demonstrated success in closing the achievement gaps. And this concludes Inside EPS report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Uglomire. Mr. Kennedy.
Pad number five, Authorization Report. Approve the report.
Move by Mr. Close and by Mr. Pereira. Any questions or comments? See another local. Bachelor.
Again, due to the lack of time given to me to review this material, I'm abstaining.
Kalala. Yes. Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Five A supplemental authorization report.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Penrose and by Commissioner Spina. Any questions or comments? See another local.
Bachelor.
Yes.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Six Finance and Accounting Report.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pereira, second by Commissioner Spina. Any questions or comments?
Local. Bachelor.
Abstain.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Abstain.
Six A Transfer of Funds.
Transfer of Funds.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Spina, second by Commissioner Pereira. Any questions or comments? See another local.
Bachelor.
Yes.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero. Pad number seven, Award of Contracts.
Award of Contract.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Spina and by Commissioner Pallo. Any questions or comments? See another local.
Bachelor.
Abstain.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Just one second. Yes.
Seven A supplemental contracts. Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pereira and by Commissioner Spina. Any questions or comments? See another local.
Bachelor.
Abstain.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero. Seven B, second supplemental award of contracts.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pereira, second by Commissioner Pallo. Any questions or comments? See another local.
Bachelor.
Abstain.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero. Eight mislabeled communications. There are none. Nine, have nine claims left. Pay the claims. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pereira and by Commissioner Pallo. Any questions or comments? See another local.
Bachelor.
Abstain.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero. Pad number ten, Resolution for Submission of Schematic Design Package. Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pallo, second by Commissioner Spina. Any questions or comments? See another local.
Bachelor.
Mr. President, I have a question.
I'm sorry?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. President.
Is there a copy of the design?
I think it's one that they presented last month.
Yeah, look, schematic is kind of a high-level view of the general of facilities, what's included in the facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero. Ten A Payment for Unused Vacation Days. Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pereira, second by Commissioner Spina. Any questions or comments? See another local.
Bachelor.
Yes.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Ten B Payment for Unused Sick Days. Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pereira, second by Commissioner Spina. Any questions or comments? See another local.
Bachelor.
Yes.
Kalala. Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero. Resolution ten C Member Participation in a Cooperative Pricing System. Move the resolution. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pereira, second by Commissioner Pallo. Any questions or comments? See another local.
Bachelor.
Yes.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero. And V Member Participation in a Cooperative Pricing System for Bergen County Cooperative System. Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pereira, second by Commissioner Spina. Any questions or comments? See another local.
Abstain.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Resolution Authorizing Procurement of Supplemental Special Education Services. Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pallo, second by Commissioner Spina. Questions or comments? Here again, local.
Yes.
Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero. We have first reading of the following policies and regulations. Policy two-one-three-O, principal evaluation. Regulation two-one-three-O, principal evaluation. Policy four-one-one-six, evaluation of teaching staff members. Regulation four-one-one-six-R, evaluation of teaching staff members. Policy six-oh-oh-oh-point-two, accountability. And policy six-one-seven-one-point-four, special education. All of these policies and regulations are available for review in the office of the School Business Administrator Board Secretary. And that concludes this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. The President requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act specifically for discussion of personnel, contracts, and legal matters. The Board will reconvene in public and may take formal action.
Motion to go into private.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pallo, second by Commissioner Spina. Try this again. The President requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act specifically for discussion of personnel, specifically CD, SI, and KQ. Resolution for grievance matters, revised job description, administrator contracts, USAC documents, general liability insurance package, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying results. The Board will reconvene in public to take formal action.
Motion to go into private.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pallo, second by Commissioner Pereira. Local.
Bachelor. Kalala.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.